All right. The February 3, 2025 Legislative Session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set silent. Ms. Pickard will lead us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. I would like to use this time to observe a moment of silence in honor of the 67 lives lost last week in Flight 5342. May we listen to one another intently with the purpose of bettering ourselves and our community. May we humbly accept the responsibilities assigned to us, and may we carry out each of these responsibilities to the best of our capabilities. Amen. And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonies tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece which was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. Individuals that signed up ahead of time, Kurt Svensson, Jignan Patel, and Elizabeth Del Castillo. Mr. Svensson, you can go ahead.
Hey, Kurt Svensson. I live in Arnold. In 1997, I moved cross-country to take a job in the county budget office. I was young and not much concerned about my financial security. That was 30 years down the road. I didn't even know the county offered a generous retiree health benefit. I didn't fully appreciate the pension plan I vested in within just five years. I was able to buy a small split foyer for $160,000. I still call that house my home, and it's now valued at $450,000. But my property tax bill is based on a much lower valuation, thanks to the county's homestead tax credit program. I have a lot to be grateful for, but I also can't help but ask, why am I so blessed and others aren't? Why was I able to retire early? Why do I get generous retiree health insurance? Why was I able to purchase a three-bedroom home for a small percentage of my household income? Why is my current property tax bill so much less than the young family that recently moved into an identical home in my neighborhood? These are things to ponder as we embark on a new year. I'm currently facilitating a course through the Peer Learning Partnership at the Community College entitled "Utopian Thinking: Gateway to a New Reality." While preparing for this, I've discovered the reality of a gift economy, a system whereby goods and services are not sold but given away, consistent with the natural world in which we live. We don't earn being born. We don't earn the air we breathe. We don't earn the energy the sun brings us every day. The 25 people taking my course are being challenged to allow themselves to dream and imagine. My dream is that locally, right here in Anarundel County, we start to reclaim and grow our gift economy, rather than continue to demean one another in our endless pursuit of growth in the almighty GDP. More on how in coming weeks. Peace be with you.
Thank you, Mr. Svensson. Ms. Patel?
Hi, my name is Jignan Patel. I live in the Sun Valley neighborhood of Glen Burnie. I'm here. I'd like to today talk about the Plan 2040, and inside that plan, it includes Page 32, which talks about land use regulatory challenges. And on that page, they talk about, I'm going to read some of it, I actually printed it out, "permissive interpretation of low-density residential zoning," and it says, "Text amendments to zoning code have been allowed, upzoning of uses that are inconsistent with the GDP and infrastructure capacity planning." They also talk about planned unit developments and cluster developments, and it says, "These planning concepts were intended to promote high-quality and environmentally sensitive development, but have too often been used to force high-density development into areas with infrastructure, and environmental resources cannot sustain it." And why do I bring this up? Because we have workforce housing and the Nixon property development, where this is exactly what the developers are doing. They're using workforce housing to pack high-density housing onto land that cannot sustain it. So my question is, this county acknowledges that all of these things are challenges, yet we allow the developers to continue. So why is our county doing this? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Del Castillo, and I know that you've signed up for later, for Area 9, Region 9, and I just want to stress that this is for things not on the agenda. So if this is about the Region 9 plan, that'll be later for when it's public.
Right. I didn't know what I was picking.
No problem. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, this is about the M-A-I-B zoning? Yeah, because the numbers kept changing, and I didn't know what was what.
Right.
Should I go back?
Save that for later when we get to that bill.
And when I come back, will you please give them that?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Please come up to the table and state your name, address, and topic before making your remarks. Remarks are limited to two minutes. Mr. Wadi, if you want to go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Stephen Wadi. I live at 7968 Heather Miss Drive in Severn, Maryland. I'm here to talk about the January 6th insurrection and the insurrectionists who were released back to Anarundel County. On January 29, the Capital Gazette reported that, quote, "A Proud Boys leader from Millersville who beat police officers at the U.S. Capitol in 2021 was among the hundreds of January 6 defendants pardoned by President Donald Trump earlier this month," according to the Federal Bureau of Prisons. In April, Scott Thomas Miller was sentenced to five-and-a-half years in prison for his actions at the Capitol's Lower West Terrace, a tunnel where some of the attack's most violent confrontations took place. At the time, Miller's sentence was the longest against a January 6 defendant by U.S. District Court Judge Tanya Chutkin, who presided over several similar cases, and pointed to Miller's level of aggression as a factor in that decision. During a sentencing hearing last year, Miller expressed remorse for his actions and what prosecutors described as his, quote, "backwards ideology," ideas that had placed him before an Anarundel County judge as well. In 2019, Miller was arrested after disrupting a drag queen's storytime at the Savannah Park Community Library. His criminal case was eventually put on the stet or inactive docket and has since been expunged from Maryland judiciary's public records. Anarundel County, in my own words, provided the blueprint for Mr. Trump in his executive order. An Anarundel County police officer has been cleared in 2021 of any wrongdoing in connection to the January 6 riot at the U.S. Capitol and is back on the job back in 2021, while a prominent civil rights leader is calling for more transparency from county leaders and the police. That was Carl Snowden. The officer had been suspended with pay since January 11, while the matter was under investigation. Anarundel County Police wrote in a statement that the Department's Office of Professional Standards, in cooperation with federal authorities, conducted an internal investigation and determined there was no violations of agency policies or applicable laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wadi.
Yes, sir.
Paul Higgins, Pasadena, Maryland. I'm going to talk a little bit about my ancestry for a minute. I have a mother and father that came from Ireland and England. I got in-laws that came from Germany and Poland, okay? I got a barber, two of them. They've been cutting my hair for now 50 years. I ain't got many left, but they are first-generation brothers who came over here from Italy, and they're now naturalized Americans. And I have a tenant that lives in one of our properties. She just got her citizenship. I bring all that up because I feel when I read emails coming from our county executive that we're being gaslighted on immigration, okay? We sit here in this chamber, and we pledge to the flag. Every meeting, and we don't talk about immigrants, we say, "One nation, under God, with liberty for all." And we need to lay back on the immigration dialogue and start focusing on citizens, start focusing on residents, and taking care of the business in this county that we need to take care of, because we can't take care of everybody. And if we look out for one another, then everybody should be looking out for each other. That's all.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. Good evening. I'm Kate Fox. I'm from Davidsonville, Maryland, and I'm Chair of the GAN Legislative Committee. As noted in Plan 2040, ongoing traffic congestion is indicative of a need to thoroughly examine the county's adequate public facilities regulations. GAN believes the significant traffic congestion throughout the county, especially at certain times, makes respondents to the surveys by the Center of the State for Local Issues not want more development, and they consistently respond this way. And we need to revamp our APF test for roads into one for all modalities of transportation, especially transit. We need to increase impact fees to pay for more transit and other pedestrian and bicycle-oriented supports to bring our transportation network up to date. We know there will be bills in the near future to address a holistic transportation APF and revise impact fees, but until these bills are ready and passed, please support items in the upcoming budget that fund additional transit options, especially those proposed by the Transit Development Plan and others that will help connect the patchwork of transit options available throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of January 21, 2025.
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Hummer at 7:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Mr. Smith and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the County Council Chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 21, 2025? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of January 21, 2025 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 825, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Board of Education, Supplementary Appropriation and Transfers of Funds. Bill Number 925, An Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region 1 Plan. Bill Number 1025, An Ordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region 1. Bill Number 1125, An Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region 3 Plan. Bill Number 1225, An Ordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region 3. Bill Number 1325, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Commercial and Industrial Districts, Uses, Animal Hospitals, and Veterinary Clinics. Bill Number 1425, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Archaeological Resources. Bill Number 1525, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Parking, Outdoor Lighting and Signage, Measurement of Signage Area. And Bill Number 1625, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Requirements for Special Exception Uses, Assisted Living Facilities, Community Peers, and Launching Ramps.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
We don't have any resolutions this evening for introduction.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 125.
Resolution Number 125, Resolution Approving a Nomination for Appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 5.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Resolution 1-25 approves the nomination of Stephen Oaken, a resident of District 4, who was recommended by the council member from District 4 to replace the prior member who has resigned from the SAC.
So, yes, this is my nomination. I urge my colleagues to appoint Mr. Oaken. Is there any discussion on this bill? On this resolution, I'm sorry? Yes, Mr.?
Did he say Region 4 or did he say Region 5?
This is Region 5, but District 4 appointee to the Region 5 Committee.
Oh, okay. I've got to look. Thank you.
Okay. We will now open the hearing on, the public hearing on Resolution Number 125. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 125? Okay. The public hearing on Resolution Number 125 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 125.
Resolution Number 125, Resolution Approving a Nomination for Appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 5.
Okay. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 125.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 125 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Resolution Numbers 225, 325, and 425.
Resolution Number 225, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anarundel Community College Funding to Procure Long Lead Equipment, including elevator replacement and electrical switchgear for the Floristano Building renovation floors 1 through 3. Resolution Number 325, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anarundel Community College Funding to Procure CMAR Preconstruction Services for the Renovation of the Dragon Science Building. Resolution Number 425, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anarundel Community College Funding to Procure Design Services for the Renovation of the Dragon Science Building.
Are there, does, do any council members object to a joint public hearing on Resolutions Number 225, 325, and 425, which are all related to Anarundel Community College? Opposed? All right. Is there any discussion from council members? Okay. We will now open the joint public hearing on Resolution Numbers 225, 325, and 425. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did not, but would you like the administration to weigh in on these resolutions?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot administration. Would you like to weigh in on these? I skipped you.
Certainly. Briefly, thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Director, and Melissa Beardmore from Anarundel Community College, as well as Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So these three resolutions all pertain to petitions on behalf of the Community College to the Maryland Higher Education Commission, or MHEC. Resolution 2-25 is a petition for $384,933 in grant funding to procure long-lead equipment for the Floristano Building renovation on floors 1 through 3. Resolution 325 is a petition for $54,596 in grant funding to procure construction manager at risk, or CMAR, pre-construction services for the renovation of the Dragon Science Building. And Resolution 425 is a petition for $2,564,720 in grant funding to procure design services for the renovation of the Dragon Science Building. We're happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion or questions from my colleagues? Mr. Volkey?
I'm going to be quick.
I looked over and saw you both at the same time, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I know it's state funding, but just for clarity, this, the Maryland, I'm sorry, I should be asking you all as well, the Maryland State Association that's actually granting, are there any loose or relationships with federal grants that are associated with that, or is it all state money?
Melissa Beardmore from the Community College. It's all state money.
Okay.
Well, the project is funded generally 50% by the state, 50% by the county.
Mm-hmm.
The state's funding, it's bond funding.
I understand. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Good question.
Yes. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So taking the first resolution, the one about the Floristano Building, so I think there may have been a question posed about the lifespan on the equipment and materials that are going to be purchased. Can you respond to that? Are these, I don't know, how long are they going to last? Whatever we're buying, do we know? Are we going to be asking for this again? That was the question.
Ever? Probably not.
No?
No, I can't. I don't have the details on the 54, this is on the 54,000? I'm sorry.
This is only?
No, on the 384.
385, basically.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry. This is elevator replacement.
Yes.
Oh, goodness. This is probably, hopefully, a 20, 25-year project. Sorry.
Same is true for the electrical components and all that.
It's all part of the same package. So this is, we're trying to get a jump on items that have a long lead time to order, so we're ordering this kind of in advance of the construction of the project. So these have a significantly long, useful life.
Okay.
Council member, and if I might, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. So these projects are already programmed into the CIP, so this is essentially getting state money to swap out county funds, so.
Miss you up here, Mr. Trumbauer.
I'm perfectly happy being down here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for historical recollection, you had some CIP money for Dragon in last year's budget, but we hit pause. Am I remembering correctly because of increased restrictions and funding and whatnot? Is that correct?
Good memory.
Okay.
This is a project, this has been, as Mr. Trumbauer shared, has been in the CIP for a number of years. What happened last year is the project initial construction estimates came in significantly over budget, double.
Yep.
So the project, we went back to the drawing board, we redesigned, so the project had a renovation of the existing, very tired building, plus an addition. We went back and we removed the addition. So this is just a renovation of the current building that some of you have been through.
Yes, thank you. I feel like we've been talking about Dragon for, well, like you said, many years.
We have.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Okay. Since no one signed up ahead of time, is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Resolution Numbers 225, 325, and 425? Okay. The joint public hearing on Resolutions Number 225, 325, and 425 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolutions Number 225, 325, and 425.
Resolution Number 225, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anarundel Community College Funding to Procure Long Lead Equipment, including elevator replacement and electrical switchgear for the Floristano Building renovation floors 1 through 3. Resolution Number 325, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anarundel Community College Funding to Procure CMAR Preconstruction Services for the Renovation of the Dragon Science Building. Resolution Number 425, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anarundel Community College Funding to Procure Design Services for the Renovation of the Dragon Science Building.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 225.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 225 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 325.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 325 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 425.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 425 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9724 as amended.
Bill Number 9724, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Requirements for Conditional Uses School Bus Facilities.
Mr. Volkey, this is your bill.
It is. Thank you, Madam Chair. So we discussed this quite extensively at the last council meeting. In light of some of the feedback and comments from my colleagues, I will be bringing forward an amendment at the appropriate time that I believe addresses some of the concerns raised by the administration with respect to the more noxious uses that could occur if you have a bus yard where outdoor repairs are being performed. So with that, I will wait for that moment to explain it in a little more detail and ask for your support.
Administration, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. We did discuss this bill previously. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 9724 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 9724? We do have someone coming forward? Mr. Hager?
Good evening, members. Phil Hager, Hager Land Use, thank you for this opportunity. This legislation is an example of something that very seldom occurs, a piece of self-policing legislation. We sometimes consider legislation, and we look at it, and we say, gosh, am I going to regret this later on? Is there unintended consequences? Something that's going to come back and bite me? That's not the case with this legislation, definitely. Given the extremely small number of businesses that will actually be able to take advantage of it, given the relative scarcity of C1 and C2 properties over five acres in size, and given a dozen or so other conditions and requirements that have to be met in order for this bill to actually result in something that can be used, there will, this will definitely be an example of self-policing. The amendments that are going to be considered tonight will further strengthen the legislation. The bill makes sense. It's a good bill, and I urge you to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill Number 9724 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9724 as amended.
Bill Number 9724, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Requirements for Conditional Uses School Bus Facilities.
Okay. There is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2.
Amendment Number 2, this amendment requires outside repairs in C1 or C2 zoning districts to be at least 200 feet from residential structures, and requires certain indoor repairs in C1 or C2 zoning districts to be located at least 100 feet from residentially-zoned properties.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as I alluded to earlier, this is an amendment that comes out of some of our discussion that we had at the last meeting. There was a lot of discussion about the specific conditions that already govern bus facilities, school bus facilities, I should say, that are located in commercially-zoned districts. With that, this will further add protections for some of the uses that were most problematic. I want to thank the Administration for the feedback that they provided in terms of some of the concerns that they had with the bill, and some things that they thought might strengthen this and ensure that we are protecting other property owners who are abutting these businesses, but also ensuring that these businesses are able to function. So, with that, if you take a look, it's exactly what was read in, but it creates buffers for any kind of outside repairs that are being performed in C1 and C2 districts, excuse me, you have to be at least 200 feet away from existing occupied residential structures. And then if bodywork or engine rebuilding, engine reconditioning, painting, and similar activities that are only allowed indoors, if those are happening in a C1 or a C2 zone, they will additionally not only have to be indoors, but the indoor structure will need to be at least 100 feet from any residentially-zoned properties. So, this creates further setbacks and further buffers for some of these uses that are the most problematic for a school bus yard. With that, I think this is a reasonable compromise between the concerns some of my colleagues raised about trying to make this a special exception versus keeping this with the conditions. And these conditions make it even more limiting in terms of what these school bus facility operators are able to do on their property, so that we're really trying to mitigate the impact while still allowing them to operate and to function where we need them. So, with that, I will move the amendment and ask my colleagues for their support.
Second. All right. Any discussion? Mr. Smith?
Just wanted to officially and put on the record and say, I was one of those individuals that was initially looking at the special exception as a means to, and specifically for District 1, because I'm always cautious about legislations that have unintended consequences for folks that live up in my area. I was initially looking at a piece of parcel that I thought was in the Lentikum area, and did some further research. That is not the case. And I definitely want to thank Mr. Hager for doing some additional research as well for the issue that I had. And so, it does appear that this will certainly have a very limited scope and its effect. And so, I'm not as concerned about the special exception, because I think District 1 is not necessarily impacted by it. So, I just wanted to officially put that on the record, because I had raised concern about it last term, or last week, and wanted to bring that back up. So, thank you.
Administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the Administration. We appreciate the sponsor taking our feedback into account, and we're comfortable with these amendments. We urge the council to adopt them.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Like Mr. Smith, I had some concerns on this. This does address my concerns about making sure that we are not having major bus work being done in someone's backyard. So, I appreciate the efforts of Mr. Volkey and OPZ to come up with this. So, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 2.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer, or, excuse me, Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 2 to Bill 9724 has been adopted.
All right. Bill Number 9724 as amended will be heard on February 18th, 2025. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 125.
Bill Number 125. In ordinance concerning branches of county government, executive branch reorganization, office of transportation, public ethics, transportation officer.
Mr. Hunt? Not Mr. Volkey, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the Administration. With me at the table, I have Crystal McGill Belk from the Office of Transportation, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So, you may recall, we've discussed this issue previously back in the summer when we were adopting the Transportation Master Plan, as well as at a work session back in January. But in the course of developing the Transportation Master Plan last summer, we realized that the Office of Transportation was not actually in the county code. Previously, responsibility for this office had been split up between different departments. And so, this bill is merely clarifying and putting into county code that the Office of Transportation exists and is responsible for transportation planning. Happy to answer any questions.
And I'm sure Mr. Sneed is very happy to know that he now exists, or he will exist shortly, we hope. Is there any discussion on this bill? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What does this mean for all the money we've appropriated over the years to the Department of Transportation? I mean, does it have any legal effect? Like, because we note the Office of Transportation in the budget book, so.
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. That's a question I hadn't thought about before, but I think that the, even though it didn't exist in the code, the office still existed and still acted, and the money did go to them and was expended by them as appropriated. So, I don't really think it would be undone at this point or be found illegal.
Interesting. Okay. I don't know either, that's why.
Moving forward. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 125. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 125? Nope. We do have someone coming.
For the record, Paul Higgins, Pasadena, Maryland. As I was reviewing the agenda for tonight, I come across this bill, and I thought to myself, well, let me see what this is all about. So, I went online, and I realized this is a position we're putting on the executive staff. It's not going into one of the departments. So, I thought, well, let's look at the executive staff. Well, he has 13 positions now. This will be the 14th. At least, that's what it says online. If you go to Howard County, Howard County Executive has five positions. While I'm not opposed to the Department of Transportation, I think, as Mr. Volkey brought up, I question why it resides at the executive level. It should reside in one of the departments, and if there's a problem, the executive should call that director up and work it out. I got a whole nother transportation issue you all know about it, okay? And I think just adding that level of voice and power is watering down where the work is getting done. So, I would vote, I'm against this position going on his staff. Thank you.
The public hearing on Bill Number 125 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 125.
Bill Number 125. In ordinance concerning branches of county government, executive branch reorganization, office of transportation, public ethics, transportation officer.
Any further discussion? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bless you. I'm piggybacking on my question from before, Ms. Kenny. But I wasn't the only one who had this question. I have to say, in one of the notes that the Auditor's Office compiled, I think they had similar concerns. If this bill didn't pass, what happens to the funding that's been allocated in this year's FY '25 budget to the Office of Transportation? Would it still be usable?
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Well, the, I mean, the office does exist, and the transportation officer is already, as Ms. Hummer said, is already a person who exists in the county. They have projects and things that they have money appropriated for, and, you know, that they're going to expend. So, you know, much like when it was under the other departments, there's still things that are being funded in the budget, whether it's under that department or something else. There's still, you know, projects and other items that are funded that would still be appropriately funded under the budget.
And so, by codifying this office, if that's the answer, then what's the need for this bill? It seems like if what we can do is already there, and everything's kind of humming along, and there's no problem with it not having been codified, and there's no problem with the money we've appropriated even if this bill doesn't pass, then what's the purpose of the bill?
Well, I don't think it's really an appropriation issue. I mean, I think it's in part a cleanup bill. You know, that we have this office that exists that isn't codified. All the other offices and departments that exist in the county are all codified, and all the positions, you know, that the county has are codified. This one has the wrong name. You know, the name of the office isn't there, so it's really cleaning up the fact that this doesn't actually exist in the code, even though it exists in actuality.
But this one exists by way of executive order, right? Is that, did it come about through executive order? I know there was the Schu executive order that kind of created it, and then there was a Pittman executive order that rescinded and superseded the Schu order and reconstituted. But did that, was that what created it, or was it created through legislative action on a piece-by-piece basis?
That, do you know, Ethan, the background of that? I can't recall that, because Ms. Blair was the one who had worked on this, and she's out, so I don't know, I don't know the background of it. That part, I do not know how it was actually created. I think it was just, I think they had meant to do the legislation, and it just never happened when it came into being. But Ethan may know more.
Yeah, I believe previously the responsibilities are split up, I think, between the Department of Public Works and the Department of Aging, and there were some retirements. And this is pre-2018. I think this was 2016, 2017. And so, all that responsibility was combined under one person, and it was just never put in the code.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so, that's true. When we, in 2016 or 2015, the previous county executive at one point had created or reorganized his inner government to have outward and inward facing. I don't know if some of you all remember that during that timeframe, when he had this inward and outward facing. And so, we realigned it. And so, there were some functions that flowed from that. The intent, I think, was always to have this direction with the transportation, because you're right, it was derived from some of those other departments. But from our purpose as a legislator, for us, at least in my mind, it's purpose, scope, and intent, right? So, if the purpose of what we voted on during the budget was to fund that activity, and the scope of it is still in there, and the intent is there, then that legislative, that is what really, really matters. And so, I mean, I don't have necessarily any issues with this bill, but I don't think there's any grounds for the state or federal level to come and say, hey, because it wasn't codified in code, that it didn't exist. Well, when we, the legislation is what made it exist, the function, I should say, is what made it exist, when we appropriated money to that activity in the subsequent budgets. And so, that's my interpretation of it.
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. I think you said better what I was trying to say to Mr. Volkey, that those projects, like you said, the projects and the items and the people, they were all funded, you know, regardless of their label, exactly what you just said.
All right. Any further comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 125.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 125 has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 225.
Bill Number 225. In ordinance concerning subdivision and development, zoning, development requirements for particular types of development, redevelopment.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the Administration. Joining me at the table will be Jansen Evelyn, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use, as well as Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. We did discuss this bill at the work session back in January. This is a reintroduction of a bill that did not pass a couple of years ago, that is meant to incentivize and streamline the process for redeveloping properties in certain neighborhoods and areas, and policy areas in Anorondal County. I'll turn it over to Jansen Evelyn for just some brief remarks.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. I'm not going to go into the same monologue that I did last time, but for the sake of the public hearing, I definitely want to ensure that everyone understands the purpose of this redevelopment legislation. Ultimately, Bill 225 advances smart growth by promoting redevelopment in areas that were designated for growth and revitalization under Plan 2040, the county's general development plan. By repurposing existing spaces, this bill is a critical tool that will help tackle the housing affordability challenges that we have while maintaining zoning standards, incorporating public input requirements, and reducing the pressure to develop in greenfield or green areas. It also simplifies, accelerates the development approval process, incentivizes the reuse of underutilized commercial space, and induces, and introduces flexibility to support projects aligned with community priorities. I mentioned earlier in my statements that it takes objectives from Plan 2040, and the redevelopment project, it will apply, will apply in the following GDP policy areas: critical economic, critical corridor, town center, and TOD overlay. We were going to utilize, or the presentation that we had utilized at the work session, we had updated it to include a map, so that everyone could understand that we were, that this is not a countywide bill. This is one that will apply in specific areas that the county's planning and zoning office felt were areas that would be ripe for growth because of its proximity to either transit, and also from an economic development perspective, these are areas that would be ripe for revitalization. This aligns with Plan 2040 in the following ways, and I'm not going to go through each and every policy point, but I do want to stress a couple. Specifically, goal, Built Environment 1, which talks about how we need to align development regulations with the desire to focus development, redevelopment, and revitalization in those same aforementioned targeted areas while protecting and enhancing neighborhoods. Additionally, policy Built Environment 13-6 encourages redevelopment of gray fields and brown field properties through incentives, regulatory relief, and the use of streamlined review processes, considering flexibility in the mix of uses as appropriate to meet community needs. And again, while I can go on with five additional policy areas, I'll save everyone's attention, but if there are any questions, we are more than willing to respond after the public testimony.
Any discussion from council members? Ms. Feedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate all of the comments. Mr. Jansen, I want to thank the Administration for discussing a specific area of District 5 with me, and some concerns that have come up, because the critical corridor, there is a section of critical corridor in District 5, and it just so happens to be a commercial area that we discussed at length during Region 4's comprehensive rezoning. So, I just want to understand how previous legislation, this legislation, all kind of work with Region 4. So, I've heard concerns from residents about the ability to have more units in a C3 redevelopment under this bill. But legislation under the moderately-priced dwelling unit bill that passed, that was the first step. That can already be done based on the MPDU bill, going through the traditional development process. Is that accurate?
I'll quickly answer and turn it over to Lynn Miller from Planning and Zoning. But yes, I know we've had an opportunity to talk about this a little bit earlier today, and the specific area in your council act district that you're talking about, while, as I noted earlier in our conversations, that this is, this is one where, while it required a sector plan study under the region plans and comp zoning, this is one that, under this piece of legislation, or the redevelopment legislation, it would be allowed to incorporate some residential utilization. But I also want to stress, and I think this is the, this is the important part, the reason this bill is put in is because there are many areas in the county that are under, they're in need of tremendous economic revitalization. They're being underutilized. The area in your council act district is a thriving one, and it's, and there's no property owner, developer on the planet that would take an area that is lucrative, profitable, and then pause utilization of it to add some residential. So, that was the ultimate intent of this bill, but blunt answer, while under the designation were to change to, which one was it? Was it a mixed-use suburban?
It was increasing the density from 15 units to 22 units, under the MPDU.
And I know that you, and, but did I answer your question? I know you were talking specifically about the sector plan study.
You did. And, Madam Chair, is it okay if I follow up?
Yeah.
I appreciate that, and, you know, it's a balance, because I understand the Administration is looking for ways to incentivize redevelopment in areas that are not bustling with commercial activity.
Yes, ma'am.
Like the Severna Park Marketplace.
Correct.
But I have to also acknowledge that this does put an option on the table whether or not it would be utilized, that would apply to that area.
That is correct.
Okay. So, preview, we can talk offline about this, because I am considering an amendment that would exempt an area that has language for a sector study in the Region 4 plans.
I anticipated that, ma'am.
Okay. Since we can all agree that that is a unique area of the critical corridor, but I do appreciate your answers.
And I appreciate your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 225. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece, which was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 225? Please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Ms. Fox, you can begin.
Thank you. I'm Kate Fox. I live in Davidsonville, Maryland. I'm Chair of the GAN Legislative Committee. First of all, GAN would like to thank Lynn Miller of OPC for her responses to our questions and concerns with this bill that I shared with you in a letter from yesterday. Based on her responses, we feel we can support the bill. There's much to like about it. The requirement in the previous redevelopment bill for a community meeting before concept plan submission, which we advocated for, has been included in this bill. We appreciate that it was retained. We also appreciate that this bill will take effect concurrent with the Housing and Containment Act. These two bills, plus the recent mixed-use bill, will be very useful tools for shaping development and redevelopment in the county going forward. However, there are a few things we'd like to see changed. One would be that the provisions apply to more areas of the county than in the targeted development, redevelopment, and revitalization policy areas specified in the bill. And we would like to find a way to apply the mixed-use provisions to more redevelopment projects, especially in commercial areas. If housing, and especially housing at multiple price points below market value, are needed, as we have been hearing, then providing such housing should be encouraged in all redevelopment, but especially near employment centers. Finally, we'd like to see mixed-use policy, I'm sorry, we would like mixed-use overlay areas to be added to the list of policy areas to which the provisions of this bill apply. We're aware there's an amendment. We've not had a chance to review it, so we will get back to you on whether we support it or not, but thank you for listening.
I'm Karen Royer. I live in Berrywood in Severna Park. Bill 225 designates a critical corridor for high-density development on Ritchie Highway through Severna Park, but this is not an area that can support any additional development because the traffic is already overbuilt, gridlocked, multiple times every day, and allowing additional housing to add additional traffic in this area is a blatant disregard for public safety and a further degradation of our quality of life in that narrow corridor. The critical corridor designation on this part of Ritchie Highway should be deleted from this bill, so I agree with Representative Fiedler that that part needs work. Thank you.
Charles.
Hello, my name is Craig Myers. I'm a resident of Severna Park. I appreciate the value of long-term planning. Project 2040 can be a valuable tool, but the plan has a severe lacking. There is more to planning than just housing and business density. The planning needs to be holistic. There should be no density increases until adequate transportation is available. I do not see that in this bill. My second point is that social programs should be paid for by the government, and any system that pays for social programs by giving breaks to developers is, in my opinion, broken. It leads to impacts on environmental and traffic density. All I have to say, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Maureen Carr York. I'm the President of the Greater Severna Park Council. This bill has raised a lot of concern in Severna Park because of its focus on an area of the county that we consider our main street. Severna Park lies on both sides of this Ritchie Highway. That's the area that our students have to cross, going back and forth to the high school. That is the area where our businesses exist, and it is a thriving business area. That's why we do not see why there's a need to give our area this designation. 2011, 2012, I served on the Transportation Functional Master Plan, CAC. At that time, the state chose, despite vigorous opposition, to designate this same area for transit-oriented development. This bill includes both transit-oriented development and critical corridor as a reason to allow a dramatically increased amount of development, much higher density than the area can sustain. Also, looking at the map, it goes very far beyond the commercial areas into what is currently single-family homes, yards, and a school, a bike path, playgrounds, and a lot of other important things to a community. And we would like to urge you to not have our area included in this way at this time. When the area needs redevelopment, fine, look at it then, but to designate it in this manner now invites mischief that we would rather not see. And there are other provisions you've already enacted, just to finish, bills that provide other ways of dealing with housing shortages and affordability.
Yes, sir.
My name is Max Gross, a resident of Annapolis, Maryland. I'm here on behalf of the Anorondal County Association of Realtors, just to express our general support for this bill. We think it is consistent with the National Association of Realtors' goals, the Governor Moore Housing Program goals, and the county's Plan 2040, and that is the level of agreement that we can get behind. I understand that there will be amendments, and this will be a process that will involve some tinkering, and we look forward to engaging and being a part of that effort. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this bill? Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Bob Royer from the community of Berrywood. I represent tonight the Berrywood Community Environmental Committee. I am a volunteer quality water monitor for the Magathie River Association, and this past year, we have experienced sulfur blooms in Cattail Creek, resulting in the release of hydrogen sulfide gas, which is a potent toxin, which is a direct result of pollution stemming from overdevelopment. I personally witnessed it myself and was overcome by the fumes coming off the creek when I was photographing the bloom, and had to crawl off the dock on my hands and knees to get back to safety. I could get away from this health threat, but what do people do who cannot because they live there? Amanda Fiedler, Delegate Amanda Fiedler, was kind enough to attend the next MRA meeting we had on that, where we spoke about this significant health hazard, and discussed the possibility for the county, or perhaps the state, to help us by installing hydrogen sulfide gas monitors in the area to warm residents when the air levels are detecting toxic levels by posting signs to notify of avoiding contact with the water, keeping children inside or otherwise away from the toxic fumes from the creek. This is an unacceptable health and safety issue which cannot be made worse through further development in the Cattail Creek watershed, and for this reason, the critical corridor in Severna Park should be deleted from this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Paul Spader. I'm President of the Magathie River Association. I was just settling down for a glass of wine for a long winter nap, because tomorrow's my 75th birthday, and I get a phone call saying, "You ought to come down to the county council." Now, I try to stay away from the county councils as much as possible. However, this bill has caught my attention. What Bob had talked about, this hydrogen sulfide, I've been saying for years, I've been President of the Magathie River Association for more than 30 years, never received a nickel for anything I've ever done, but this is an issue that's directly related to overdevelopment. You cannot keep building things without consequences, and now we have a consequence. When I look at this, you see a map, and I was a cartographer 35 years. It's not a white sheet of paper that you can draw Sims games on it. There are rivers, there are creeks, there's roads. Where this development is, it's entirely in the Magathie River watershed, so it really caught my attention because all that pollution is going to an area that is overpolluted to start with. The roads are narrow. You, like Mount Missouri, you put a fort where you can block traffic down. This area is a peninsula kind of thing. You cut off the traffic and you back the traffic up from here to Glen Burnie and beyond. We don't, I don't support this kind of thing, and it's just really hard to try to correct mistakes that are made, and most of these mistakes come for not thinking far enough down the road of what the consequences of development is. And tonight, I think you really need to pause and think, no matter what it is, there are consequences, and we've reached those limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing on Bill Number 225 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 225.
Bill Number 225, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Development Requirements for Particular Types of Development Redevelopment.
And there is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1, this amendment adds multifamily and townhouse dwellings as a conditional use in the C4 district and provides conditions for the use.
Ms. Pickard, this is your amendment.
Thank you. So the way this amendment is worded is not exactly the intent of the amendment. My goal is, when we look across the county, we have, I've counted at least a dozen, if not more, vacant, abandoned, small gas stations, and fast-food restaurants that have been vacant and abandoned for at least a decade or more. And being that they are C4, this bill as drafted does not pull them into the applicability of redevelopment. We can, in my community, there are several of these parcels, and my constituents are tired of seeing boarded-up vacant, they hog a corner, they're blighting certain communities throughout District 2, but they're not just in District 2. So I understand the need to keep C4, it is our highest commercial use. We want to maintain commercial viability across the county, but by eliminating or not allowing C4 to be pulled into the applicability of this redevelopment, I just feel like these properties are going to continue to languish, and they'll never become something cool, as I like to say. But they, you know, their tanks under the ground have been sealed for environmental protection, which is great, but they're not becoming something else. So that was the intent of this amendment. I guess I'm talking too long. We need to actually, motion to adopt Amendment Number 1.
Do I have a second?
Rodvian, second.
All right. Discussion, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Ms. Miller, I don't know if you have the code with you or not, but I want to understand something. I'm looking in 1814-303, which looks like that is, I'm just taking commercial revitalization areas for a second, not necessarily critical economic corridor, but just looking at that. It already says in the code in 1814-303A that in a C4 district, the use is allowed for a property located in a commercial revitalization area with underlying zoning of C4 are the permitted conditional and special exception uses set forth, but then further on in C, it talks about residential uses, and it says multifamily and townhouses can go there, and then in C1, it says they can't exceed 22 dwellings per acre. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, I'm hearing a lot about, oh, no, we don't want these types of uses, but what I'm seeing is, I think a lot of these are already allowed. I think the purpose of the redevelopment bill isn't just to say you can do these things, it's to incentivize it a little bit by some decreases on school APF if there are less than 50% of the, strike that, I think it's more than 50% of the units are efficiencies or like one bedrooms, and, you know, some of the traffic APF issues. Am I understanding that correctly? Like, this is not opening Pandora's box to things that have never been allowed in these districts. This is saying, we're almost incentivizing these things a little bit more than we have previously in the code because we're giving some of these APF sort of dial-backs.
Right. Lynn Miller, yes, you characterized that correctly.
Okay.
And just to clarify, the bill is applicable to C4 properties when they're located in one of the policy areas that the bill applies to. So the part of the bill that doesn't address C4 properties are the Article 18 sections that allow for the little bit of bump up in density and a change to the floor area. That currently in the bill applies to C1 through C3 only, but the bill itself and all of the Article 17 allowances that are meant to streamline the development view process, that applies to any project in any zoning district that's in one of those policy areas. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Thank you. And just to firm up sort of the last piece, the chair hasn't asked you this yet, but OPC has no objection to this amendment?
I'll, anybody? I'll take the, you said OPC, but I'll speak on behalf of the administration. We've had an opportunity to discuss this amendment, and as Councilmember Pickard noted, we were very focused on ensuring that we had C4 still being retained to do that high-intense commercial activity. So with the, as currently written, there are a couple areas that we probably will continue to communicate with the council member to ensure that it's consistent, but we agree with, we are not opposed to this legislation, to this amendment.
And OPC and the administration are aligned?
OPC is part of the administration, Mr. Volkey.
Well, doesn't always mean they agree. That's what I'm asking. All right.
We are aligned, Mr. Volkey. Ms. Pickard.
Oh, well, I'm not sure I followed everything Ms. Miller said earlier, but my goal was mainly, you know, this bill is about redevelopment, so we have underutilized parcels out there in our county that were developed in various decades, and as folks know, if you are building today, the emphasis on environmental stewardship and protection is very different from when parcels were developed 50 years ago. So in the redevelopment process, they're going to actually improve the environmental stewardship and protection of the area where they sit. I've seen it. Much of this bill is modeled after the Glen Burnie Sustainable Community Overlay that we passed unanimously in 2020. That's where we got the concept plan, that we bring, the investor, developer can bring to the community what they want to do with 3D massing, and show the community how they're going to transform or evolve a parcel that is possibly blighting their community. We have a perfect example with the Moose Athletic Club on Crane Highway. That property did a tremendous investment in environmental mitigation and protection with the stream beds and creeks that line that property. It is much more, it is a healthier property today than it was 10 years ago, and it's a shining example of what redevelopment can be, even though it is not, it did not move that property into a residential component. Redevelopment does not always have to end up with a residential component, but providing that flexibility, especially in these critical corridors that we know are very narrowly tailored in this bill, provides that flexibility, along with addressing why possibly, where we want housing to go, along bus lines, along employment centers, and things like that. My concern with this amendment was making sure that these small C4 parcels would be picked up in the applicability of the bill. I hope my colleagues, if it is drafted properly, I hope my colleagues will pass it. I've been asking that for a week, so.
Is there any other comments from the council, administration? Okay.
Just got a small one.
Yes, Ms. Miller.
So, the, obviously, the redevelopment bill addresses, it has a comment in there about the APF standards, and that has to be met. It also has a comment in there in reference to the 250 trips or less that the bill would, that a developer could then apply for as long as that trip count doesn't increase significantly. I was looking at this over the last few days and trying to figure out, and I'm not opposed to your amendment as well, just to put that on the record. When it comes to the redevelopment bill as a whole, are there, has the administration looked at and done a thorough research of areas that could be optimal for large-scale redevelopment instead of areas that are not ideal for redevelopment? Because when they created that development or that intersection with a gas station or whatever the instance is, the infrastructure surrounding it just wasn't adequate. And even when you, a developer builds something, it's usually on the grounds that they're developing, and maybe a little on the exterior, but everything feeding into that area isn't necessarily improved upon. And so, did the administration do a thorough review of where large-scale or any scale of developments could take place, just to put a dart on the board, so that we're being surgical and not just applying things that, countywide, that doesn't make any sense?
Lynn Miller, I can try to speak to that. I mean, on the one hand, no, we're not able to do an APF test for a hypothetical redevelopment. I mean, on the one hand, no, we're not able to do an APF test for a hypothetical redevelopment project, but I will say that when we started work on this bill, you know, one of the key factors we wanted to try to accomplish was to allow some of these older, underutilized commercial properties that are starting to become, you know, not very attractive. We wanted to facilitate something to help them redevelopment, and we got a list from Anarundel Economic Development Commission of, I don't remember the exact number, but maybe 32 or 33 commercial properties around the county that they had had an eye on or had heard from property owners who were interested in seeing these properties redevelopment. And so when we crafted the bill focusing on these specific policy areas, it did capture, I think, all but maybe two of those properties on the list. So, you know, even though it looks like it covers a relatively small amount of land area, it does seem to cover some of the key commercial properties around the county that appear to be ripe for redevelopment.
Thank you.
I also want to add that we, I just want to be clear, this bill is constrained to targeted development and, and specific policy growth areas as outlined in the general development plan. So this is not, as we've heard from some members of the public where they were like, we should expand into, into other areas like neighborhood preservation, which makes up a larger percentage of the county. But because we wanted to ensure that this is one that, that had this appropriate infrastructure in place, that's why it's constrained to those areas that are designated for that level of growth that can absorb that capacity.
Ms. Pickard, do you have another comment?
Oh, yes, I have lots. This is why, this is why during the work session, I thought y'all were going to be like putting up the map. It would be helpful to the people here in the audience as well as the public at home, but you didn't take my advice. So, the, the other thing is, as we look at expanding beyond, this is one of those policies that I predict has like a five-year runway before we really start to see anything happening from its implementation. It's going to, this, this takes time. Anarundel County is mainly a suburban county that's grown over the last few decades with our largest growth residential in like the 80s and 90s. But we're now seeing some of our post-World War II area, I mean, 70s, 60s, 50s even, strip centers that are sort of aging out of their useful life. And I think this is a, it's a very timely bill to be bringing and focusing on redevelopment as we know that we are, some of our very core values are protecting our, our environment. So redevelopment, we should be incentivizing it and we should be looking towards those underutilized parcels, in my opinion. I suspect that if this bill passes with this narrow scope of these different policy areas that were designated during the Plan 2040 conversation, I suspect three, four, five years down the road, if there is a parcel or a project that is outside of, of the scope of this bill currently, that this council or the next council will take that up at the time. The community will be ready to see somewhere in the county that's not currently on the applicable map and will revisit this policy. I know from the Glenbernie Sustainable Community Overlay that was passed four, five years ago now, not much has happened. We've had about three projects and one that I would view as true, really redevelopment of that, that old Moose Lodge. So it's not something that on a dime, the whole county's going to change. You're not going to see cranes going up on every, in all of these corridors tomorrow. I would urge everybody to pass this amendment and then move on with this bill. Thanks.
Yes, Madam Chair, just one point of, I agree with everything Councilmember Pickard said with respects to the rationale behind this bill, but one point of clarification, we, at the work session, members of the council asked for that map to be included in the presentation. We did include that map in the presentation. We were ready to present said presentation today and at 7:02 PM, I found out that we were not going to do said presentation. So I just want to make sure the record is extremely clear with respects to that.
Yes, and I will clarify that as Chair, I said for them not to do the presentation again, which we'd already done at the work session, but that information is available for, we will make sure that it is available for anyone from the public who wants to view.
Bipartisan, back up to the chair.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, amendment number one to Bill 225 has been adopted.
Bill number 225 as amended will be heard on February 18th, 2025. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of bills number 325 and bill number 425.
Bill number 325, In Ordinance Concerning General Development Plan, Region 9 Plan. Bill number 425, In Ordinance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region 9.
Councilmembers, does anyone object to a joint public hearing on bills number 325 and 425? Okay, so we will do that, but now we will let the administration speak to these two bills for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will be brief on this one, on these two bills, I promise. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Christina Pampa, Cindy Carrier, and Eric Ketterling from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So these two ordinances are for the adoption of region plan and comprehensive zoning for region planning Area 9, which covers the Mayo Peninsula, Galesville, West River, Shadyside, Churchton, Deal, Tracy's Landing, North Beach, and parts of Edgewater and Friendship. This is part of Plan 2040 implementation. I will turn it over to Christina Pampa for some brief comments.
Ms. Pampa.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Madam Chair, members of the council, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We did a very extensive presentation to the council at their work session on January 14th. We don't really have any additional comments. We saw that there's online testimony. We know, we see some familiar faces in the audience and we're ready to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any discussion? All right, we will now open the joint public hearing on bills number 325 and bill number 425. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received three pieces for bill number 325 and five pieces for bill 425, and they've been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. And we have six seats up there, so I'm going to call the first six. Buzz Winchester, Caleb Royer, Steve Sharkey, Millicent Calver, Peter Quirk, and Cherry, and that's all the name I have. And Mr. Winchester, you can go first.
Buzz Winchester, I'm the president of the West River Improvement Association, Galesville Civic Organization. We've reviewed all the proposed zonings for Galesville. We have two comments on two properties. I'll confine my comments to the rezoning of the firehouse, or the proposed rezoning of the firehouse at 954 Main Street from R2 to C4. Respecting the council's time, I've submitted written testimony previously that contains our main points opposing the change of the firehouse property to commercial and have asked members of the Galesville community who feel strongly about this issue to allow me to express their sentiments in my oral testimony. We have several of them here. Briefly, here are a few points showing that this change is both unnecessary and unwise. The owner of the property claims he would like a maritime museum with outside storage. The Office of Planning and Zoning has said he may do this in a residential zone with a variance so that the zoning change is unnecessary. The request to change zoning to C4 Highway Commercial District is a fanciful overreach. Galesville is a small waterfront village in rural South County, not a densely developed area like Pearl, Ritchie Highway, or Edgewater. And every entity, stakeholder advisory committee, the Office of Planning and Zoning, and the Planning Advisory Board that has touched this request has opposed it. All of these want the property to remain residential. Even an amendment that would change it to a less intense category such as C-1 would be advised. We do not need a convenience store, fast food restaurant, hair, nail, and tanning salons. They're all fine in developed commercial areas, but not smack dab in a small village residential area. It would be a travesty. Added to this, once the commercial zoning is granted, it could be used as leverage to expand the zoning to other surrounding properties. Finally, last summer, as part of the 2040 Stakeholders Advisory Committee process, the Galesville committee launched a petition drive to stop this change. Despite having only a two-week window in the middle of the summer, when many of our residents were away on vacation, over 80% of the community households signed up to oppose any commercial use on this property.
Thank you, Mr. Winchester.
No one, and I repeat, no one said that they would support the change. Thank you, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Winchester. Mr. Royer.
Hello, my name is Caleb Royer. My wife and I are the owners of 25 Leland Road in Edgewater, Maryland, 21037 on Warehouse Creek, right off Route 2. Our comprehensive rezoning change number is CZR9EDW0400, and we've also provided written testimony. My property is existing use as a marina with slip rental for over 50 years, and as a result, we've submitted an application for comprehensive rezoning. The property is adjacent to the Warehouse Creek Marina at 58 Leland Road, which is another small commercial marina with comprehensive change number CZR9EDW0500, which also applied for rezoning. These two properties have been in use, seen in photographs going back to the 1960s, and we requested a zoning change for consistency between the zoning and these existing uses. There's no planned development on either property, no change to impervious surface, no felling of trees, no new structures or services, just continuation of the existing uses. We desire to continue legally providing commercial slip rental and wet storage of watercraft to the public, which aligns to the Plan 2040 goals. OPZ, the Stakeholder Advisory Committee, as well as the Planning Advisory Board, reviewed our applications and our testimony and has recommended rezoning these two properties, recognizing the historic uses as marinas, and to make the zoning consistent with the existing use and the region goals. So this rezoning is part of the Bill 4-25 Before You, and my wife and I, as well as our neighbor, the owner of that property for the past few years, supports this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sharkey.
It's very near to 1014 East Benning Road, which is being considered for a zoning change from R2 Residential to W2 Light Industrial. Such a change is inappropriate and would have a detrimental impact on the residential nature of this very small community. As you can see in this picture, all of this yellow is residential area. The property in question is here, and with split zoning, you can see that extending this would introduce industrial zoning where there has never been used before. The street is residential, there has never been industrial operations on that portion of the property. The industrial operations are not visible, not easily visible from the street. However, rezoning would allow an expansion of the industrial operations and insert them into the middle of a quaint residential neighborhood, dramatically impacting the livability of the community. The portion of the property used for industrial operation along the road is heavily covered by gravel and is used for heavy machinery, including cranes and tractors, as well as storage of equipment and supplies, while the R2 section of the property is maintained as a grass field that fits well within the neighborhood. A change in zoning would open the potential to change the nature of the community by allowing the same equipment use and storage along the street amongst people's homes. The increase in industrial operations would create a safety hazard through increased heavy truck traffic. While the goal of the master plan was to eliminate split zoning, this should not be done blindly. In this case, the split zoning serves an important role in maintaining a livable residential community while supporting business operations. The existing careful balance between residence and business should be protected by maintaining the split zoning in this case. Thank you.
I am Millicent Calver, and I own and live on the property immediately adjacent to 1014 East Benning Road, which is the property that is being considered for the zoning change from R2 to W2. The rationale for the change is to make the zoning of the property consistent as waterfront property, part of it is now zone W2 and is used by a company that does industrial marine construction. However, this change will deeply affect the lives and properties of the entire Benning Road community, a quiet residential neighborhood of families where many people walk their children and dogs. I fear that this change is made, it will no longer be the safe, quiet street it is now. It will also negatively affect the residents of Woodfield Road, who will be subjected to the view of trucks, cranes, and scripts and tractors that will be parked there, as well as the traffic and other noise. Almost all of the residents of East Benning and Woodfield Roads, as well as other residents of Galesville, have signed a petition opposing the change. Because of the residential nature of this area, allowing an industrial property to operate right in the middle of it is totally inappropriate and will have a very negative impact on the quality of all of our lives, not to mention the value of our properties. If you could come to Galesville to see the neighborhood as it is now, you would understand why we are also opposed and upset about this zoning change. On behalf of all my neighbors, I implore you to reconsider this zoning change. We are very grateful if you will take into account the lives seriously affected by your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quirk.
Riverside Road, Edgewater. Our community of South River Park is on a very quiet residential Warehouse Creek, and it has been recommended for what we view as a grossly unfair commercial marina zoning relative to other creeks in Anarundel County. According to the county's 2018 inventory of marinas, there are no commercial marinas in nearby creeks, and we have a list of seven. And these are mainly much larger than Warehouse Creek. All of Seven River above Annapolis City has only three commercial marinas. Warehouse Creek is being proposed for two commercial marinas, and it is tiny relative to these other waterways. The M1, M A1B marina category, which is being recommended for these properties, is called a neighborhood category. However, it permits commercial uses that would be intrusive in the wooded, quiet residential communities around Warehouse Creek's bank. A tower, an administrative building, possibly multi-story, launch ramps, boat storage, multi-level, it goes on. It may be said that these would not take place. However, in zoning, because of the value of commercial property, you have to assume that it will. So, there are 40 boats that are on private slips in the creek. There would be 40 boats on commercial slips if this legislation is passed. Lot of pollution in a small area. Our suggested counterproposal, to keep to a minimum the inequities listed, that I've listed, we propose that 25 Leland Road be granted a registered non-conforming use for the eight existing slips, and that Leland, 58 Leland Road retain its present zoning category.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Ms. Cherry.
Good evening, mine is probably the easiest. I am the wife of Michael.
Your name and address.
I'm Kathy Cherry, and my current address, or the address of the property, 2106 Rose Hulane Gambles, Maryland. Okay, thank you. I am the wife of 44 years of Michael Cherry, and my brother-in-law is David Cherry. We have 275 acres land locked in Galesville. It is in the Anarundel County Conservation Program. The rights for development were sold 25 years... The rights for development were sold twenty-five years ago, and we wish to retain that position. It came to my attention recently that obviously you were combining, you were getting rid of split zones of open space. I spoke to Jessica Levy at the county. This particular piece of property, 4840, which is the 185-acre lot, still retains approximately 5% OS on it. However, it did not get changed to all RA, which was the county's recommendation in the rezoning. And I understand that 4848, which is in fact the property just abutting our property and forward of it, that is more like 40% OS, is being changed completely to RA. So my request in my filing was to also not have that split zone on the 185 acres, to get rid of that 5%. So our goal is the land is passing on to our children, of which one of them is sitting here. So I'd like to get rid of that split zone on this lot. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Next, Tony Cooper Smith, Christopher James, Brian Scrivner, Christina Scrivner, and Elizabeth Del Castillo. Mr. Cooper Smith?
My address is 706 Giddings Avenue, Suite 305, Annapolis, Maryland. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Mayo Ridge Marina and its owner Gloria Bohan. The Mayo Ridge Marina is located at 1293 Mayo Ridge Road, Edgewater, Maryland. It's a beautiful property on the shores of Ramsey Lake that has a great deal of potential. However, under the current zoning, there is little incentive for the owner to invest in and improve the property. That's why we submitted an application for rezoning to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee approximately one year ago. Our proposal is to rezone the property from a combination of MA2R2 to MA2R5, which will allow continued maritime activity while at the same time creating new but limited-scale housing opportunities. We have a period before the Stakeholder Advisory Committee and the Planning Advisory Board, both of which have recommended adoption of our proposal. The Office of Planning and Zoning also supports the proposal and has recommended it. We respectfully request that you, the county council, take the recommendations of the SAC, PAB, and OPZ and approve the proposed rezoning of the Mayo Ridge Marina. We appreciate all the time that the SAC, PAB, and OPZ have devoted to the Region 9 zoning effort, and we thank you for your time and attention to this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. James?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the council. My name is Chris James. I'm a registered architect in Rockville, Maryland, here on behalf of the owner of 1293 and 1295 Mayo Ridge Road, the parcels that constitute Mayo Ridge Marina, and the adjacent parcels on either side of it. I'm here in support of the rezoning request for these parcels. Our office was engaged to deliver a concept design that envisions the revitalization of the underutilized site in a way that is sensitive to the density and character of the surrounding neighborhood and the delicate waterfront ecosystem. Our concept for the area of the, excuse me, our concept reduces the area of the existing marina site while maintaining existing boat access, and it proposes a small new boathouse, community clubhouse, or open-air pavilion, depending on how the design would develop. The parcels on either side of the marina would include new homes that are consistent in density and appearance with the surrounding neighborhood. Following the Planning Advisory Board meeting this past September, we engaged in a dialogue with neighbors from which we received a positive response. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of the proposed rezoning of the Mayo Ridge Marina and the associated parcels. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Scrivner?
My name is Brian Scrivner. I live at 963 Main Street, Galesville, Maryland. We live directly across from the old firehouse in Galesville. And we're already working the state highway on a lot of traffic issues in the area. We've been working there for a while, and we're here to oppose this bill of changing the use of the fire hall to commercial use, where it would increase traffic on Main Street. There's a large stretch of sidewalk that, you know, is between their parking lot and Main Street. So anyone pulling in or out of their parking lot would have to back back out on Main Street. It's really a poor situation for our children on the sidewalks, riding their bikes and walking. There's no room to turn around. It's also right across the street, like I said. So any noise when the firehouse was there, when they fire up their chainsaws and generators on Saturday morning, it was very, very clear that they were doing that. You really don't want to get back in that kind of situation again where there's, you know, equipment and stuff being run right across the street. It's, the property is nestled in between a bunch of houses, very residential, right on Main Street. It's really not an appropriate use for that space. We really hope you appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christina Scrivner, and I also live at 963 Main Street in Galesville. So this is also regarding the rezoning of the firehouse on Main Street. So the first thing the current owner did was sue the volunteer first responders and our community association. Responding to this lawsuit has cost our community association thousands of dollars and rendered them unable to even pay for regular maintenance, lawn mowing, et cetera. I understand he's looking for heavy commercial zoning, which refers to land use designation that allows for large-scale, intensive commercial activities, which typically generate more noise, traffic, and potential environmental impact. Galesville is only 132 square miles of land. It already has businesses, and as such a small neighborhood filled with children, cannot support any more businesses. We have no confidence that he will serve our community. On the contrary, we have every reason to believe that he will further harm it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Del Castillo?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Del Castillo, and I'm treasurer of South River Park Community. And I'm a member of the Anarundel Ham Radio Club and also a member of the Anarundel Bird Club. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on the MA1B zoning on Warehouse Creek related to these two bills. And I gave you all a handout, too. When the new zoning is introduced, it's often untested, a bit of a kitchen sink of opportunities that might fit or make the zoning seemingly more palatable. So for example, MA1B provides for a 100-foot monopole radio tower. This doesn't fit because of proximity to Lee Airport runways. I checked it with the members. Also, do people really want to live close to this thing, this giant pulsing radio antenna? Also, so please don't stress Warehouse Creek anymore and surrounding wildlife. The creek can't take it. And this is an example of an inappropriate use that you all decision-makers probably weren't even aware of. Considering our prayers this morning, beginning at this meeting, please maintain safe environments around airports, paramount. Next, Warehouse Creek is just graduating from really good water quality. Last year's results pretty good, ensuring safe water for swimmers and waiters. Anarundel River Federation tests our water, and so does the Health Department. MA1B zoning will negatively, absolutely crush our water quality because these marinas are right across from our community beach, and most of them are waterfront. MA1B proposal for the two sites in light blue to the left will stress the creek and degrade water quality. 25 Leland sold for $1 million in 2023, and 58 Leland sold for $1.6 million in 2021. 58's got commercial use, and 25 is residential. Please see these kids finally having a chance to play on the beach with their grandpa due to the work with the county on reviving our historic swim beach. Please don't take this from them. Please vote no on M1B. Also, wildlife, look at these creeks. This owl that showed up is amazing. We've got all kinds of wildlife that will be gone. And last page, this is what you're going to get when you approve M1B, because those two properties are going to merge together and become a giant thing that's going to just crank it up.
Thank you, Ms. Del Castillo. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on Bills Number 325 and/or 425? Go ahead.
Taking an opposition to the rezoning request for the Warehouse Creek Marina. I live at 210 Maryland Way in Edgewater. I was raised, I just found out about this rezoning at a book club last week in my community, South River Park. I was raised on Warehouse Creek. It's a very, very small creek. It is not, you can swim across. I mean, it's, this would destroy it. I moved away for thirty years. I worked at CNN. My mother, you probably knew, her name was Frances Jakes. She was a reporter for the Capitol. She did Home of the Week, the food page. She worked, loved this community. I moved back, I retired to be, live in Anarundel County, which I think is a wonderful county. And I am just really sad and upset that something like a small creek could take two marinas that can take eighty slips. It is, this creek got dumped on from Route 2, the development from Route 2 put a lot of silt in this little creek. The head of the creek used to be this deep. It's mud flats now. This kind of development is, as someone who grew up here, I went to Anarundel County Schools. As I said, I love this county, and I just feel it is overreaching in a really big way. And as I said, I'm opposing the rezoning. I don't see any reason for it. There's two big marinas on either side of the South River Bridge. There's marinas up and down the South River. And Warehouse Creek is small.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Susan Sinclair. Thanks. My name's Susan Sinclair. I live at 1658 Cedar Lane in Shadyside. The letter that I received on January 15th of this year references a letter that I purportedly received in June of 2024, which I did not receive. Sometimes I do get most of my mail, but sometimes I do not. The reason that I'm here today is because the property is currently zoned, open space, and R1, which is one house per acre. My property has two houses on it. When I bought it, I bought it from someone who had a house built on it, and the previous home that was there still is there. And my concern is that, I'm seventy and seventy and a half. In a couple of years, I can take my required distribution. My hope was to convert the old house that is there to an ADU and rent that out as income for, like an Airbnb, a periodic Airbnb. And I'm wondering if the zoning as it is is going to prohibit me from doing that, even though the house was already there. Now, the house needs work done to it and will require permits, but that was my question, and I didn't want to be prohibited from doing that. So that's why I'm here today.
Thank you.
So I don't know whether I get answers to that or whether, you know, because it says here generally one house per acre, but the house is already there. And it doesn't have any plumbing. It has electricity, but no well and no running water. So I don't know whether I need to get some type of exemption or what I need to do. But there are two properties on, two houses on the property, or two dwellings, I should say. I'm just foicing that for the record, I guess.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So are there any other comments? Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on Bills Number 325 and/or 425? The joint public hearing, no, we're not closing, are we? We are closing this one. Okay. The joint public hearing on Bills Numbers 325 and 425 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bills Number 325 and 425.
Bill Number 325, In ordinance concerning general development plan, Region 9 Plan. Bill Number 425, In ordinance concerning comprehensive zoning, Region 9.
May I get a motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 325 until February 18th, 2025?
Ledbetter, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 325 until February 18th, 2025.
Ms. Rodbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Beedler?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negatives. The motion to hold the vote to Bill 3-25 until February 18th has passed.
May I get a motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 425 until February 18th, 2025? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 425 until February 18th, 2025.
Ms. Rodbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Beedler?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negatives. The motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 425 until February 18th, 2025 has passed.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to point, I want to just make sure we're clear. There will be further opportunity for public testimony in the forthcoming meetings as well.
Yes, there will be.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was on the record for the public to hear. And do you mind if I make one comment as well?
No, please go ahead.
Ms. Sinclair, someone from my office will be in touch so that I can answer, someone from my office will be in touch so that we can address your questions.
Thank you. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5, pardon? Oh, you're talking among yourselves. Okay. Distracting me. Madam Secretary, please read the bill, the title of Bill Number 525. Did we forget something? No? Yes. Yes, it's kind of, we'll hold on a sec while Ms. Pickard and Mr. Volkey are chatting away. Yeah, I mean, I followed my script, but... Okay. Ms. Schultz?
Bill Number 525, In ordinance concerning zoning requirements for conditional uses, Waterman's Home Commercial Use.
Mr. Hunt?
Do you have any comment on this bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we discussed this bill at the work session, but we support it. It's Councilmember Ledbetter's bill.
There we go. Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill does, it's very, very simple. It adds two hours of operations for watermen so that they can, you know, sell their goods to the public. In our world today, having those two extra hours makes a huge economic difference for them. And that's, it's pretty simple. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Do we anticipate any traffic concerns from this? Just checking.
I have not heard any feedback that expresses those concerns.
Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 525. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received two pieces, which have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 525? Okay, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Ms. House?
Hi, good evening. Julia House, 55, oh, I'm sorry, 5624 Shadyside Road, Churchton, Maryland. I am the president of the Waterman's Association for our area and the Legislative Committee of the Waterman's Association, secretary of the committee itself, and a commercial waterman. My husband is a commercial waterman, and we do have a home use occupancy permit for our own home. And allowing those two extra hours for our business as well as other watermen in the county will be substantial in our economic growth. If you've purchased crabs, oysters, fish, anything like that, typically it is on a weekend, especially in the summer. You go out and do your thing that day. Maybe you go on a boat, something like that. And then you come back to the house and have... something like that, and then you come back to the house and have, have your seafood. So just those two extra hours, we do not see a huge impact. It's not, it's, it's 6:00 PM that the new time would reflect, so it's not like we're causing any stress later in the night. We're not staying open until midnight or anything like that. So I appreciate your vote in support of this.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill Number 525 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 525.
Bill Number 525, Inordinance Concerning Zoning Requirements for Conditional Uses Waterman's Home Commercial Use.
Is there any other discussion? Ms. Ledbetter?
I just wanted to point out that we're actually only adding the two extra hours on Saturday.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 525.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 525 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 625.
Bill Number 625, Inordinance Concerning Public Safety, Animal Care and Control, Zoning, Miniature Pigs, and Residential Districts.
All right. Ms. Fiedler, go hog wild, honey.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the very timely pass and humor. So there have been a lot of piggy puns around lately, but this really did come out of a heartfelt email from constituents who have a pet pig that is living off property, and that property is, has been very publicized that there are going to be forthcoming changes and want to get some secure place in their own yard for their miniature pig to reside. I know oftentimes we see abandoned animals that need a home, so when there's someone that has done the homework on responsible ownership, and it alleviates some of the unwanted or abandoned pets that end up in our abandoned pet universe, I won't just say animal care and control, because they end up in many variety of places. I think it's worthwhile and helping. I know I've heard some concerns from the community, the larger community, because obviously this is a county-wide piece of legislation, but I will continue to work to really restrict where a miniature pet pig could be allowed in the county, to balance both the greater needs of the county, but also the welfare of animals. And with that, I look forward to a robust discussion, and I have amendments at the appropriate time.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Claudia Rolle, our Animal Care and Control Administrator, Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. I do have several pages of facts about pigs, but rather than wallow around in that, I will just make the point that all of the amendments that the sponsor will be bringing have been, she did in consultation with both Animal Care and Control, as well as the Office of Planning and Zoning, and they address a lot of our concerns with the bill, or all of them, and we would encourage the council to adopt them all. So happy to answer any questions.
All right. Are there any other discussion? Okay. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 625. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received 21 pieces of testimony, which have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Mary Grovan, Jim Leers, Linda Mazur, and Max Gross. Ms. Grovan.
Okay. Good evening, council members. My name is Mary Grovan, and I am the owner of First Choice Property Management, 1216 Annapolis Road, Odenton, Maryland. I manage several HOAs here in Anaronda County, and I'm here to strongly oppose Bill 625. The bill sounds harmless, however, it really isn't. It's clearly being pushed to satisfy one constituent, while the ripple effect will complicate life for countless others in other communities. As an HOA manager, I've seen this firsthand how a law like this can unintentionally create chaos in our neighborhoods. Our HOAs have carefully crafted bylaws and covenants that reflect the expectations of the homeowners who live there. These documents are not easy or cheap to change. Amending an HOA declaration can cost thousands of dollars and requires legal counsel and often demands a supermajority vote from the residents. Even then, it's a lengthy and complicated process. But let's be clear, current zoning laws already allow pot-bellied mini pigs on lots of at least 40,000 square feet, eight to be exact. So there's no need to reclassify them as a pet and cause all this confusion. As it stated in the county code, and I quote, "These regulations are in place to balance the interest of residents who want to keep livestock with those of the broader community." I also want to point out that in Delaware, they had a similar reclassification that led to a surge of abandoned pot-bellied pigs, causing property damage, environmental harm, and public health risk. They had to reclassify them as an invasive species. They have an enforcement situation where if they're found without their IDs, they are euthanized on spot. So I urge you to vote against Bill 625 to protect the integrity of our neighborhoods and to avoid unnecessary legal costs and to prevent enforcement problems that the county isn't prepared to handle. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leers.
Councilmembers and residents, my name is Jim Leers, and I live in Anaronda County in Campbell's, where my family is a proud caretaker of a miniature pig named Alfred. I'm here today to speak in favor of Bill 625 introduced by Ms. Fiedler, which seeks to reclassify miniature pigs from livestock to pets, a change that embodies both common sense and compassionate governance. The bill is carefully crafted to address potential concerns by including reasonable restrictions. It limits miniature pig ownership to properties over 47,500 square feet, which is more than an acre, requires the enclosure to be 50 foot from an adjacent residential property line, and 100 foot from an occupied dwelling on an adjacent property, requires that the miniature pig is castrated, and caps the number of pigs to two. There is no financial impact to the county government for this, if this bill is passed. Current classification of miniature pigs as livestock is placed to send a predicament with our homeowners association, which precludes us from caring for Alfred on our property. The scenario is not just about the ability to keep a pet. It's a matter of our rights as homeowners to make responsible choices on our own property, choices which are already supported by ample existing regulation designed to protect homeowners. Those who question whether this will open the door to other animals on property are responded by emphasizing the specific suitability of miniature pigs for residential life due to their manageable size, intelligence, and cleanliness, which distinguishes them significantly from other animals. Further, this is not an open-ended permission, but a regulated process allowing a limited number of miniature pigs on an appropriate less-sized lot. Regarding rumors about incidents in Delaware or a previous bill, Bill 7018, we were only found, we were only able to find one incident on the public records where two pigs were on the loose. They were captured by animal control quickly, with no harm to person or property. Delaware was an unregulated environment when this occurred. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mazur.
I'm the acting chair of the Animal Welfare Council. We are a group of county residents, including two practicing veterinarians, who have been appointed by the county executive to give input on animal welfare issues. Tonight, we are here to support Bill 625. Thank you, Councilwoman Fiedler, for trying to help Alfred. The situation for miniature pigs who lose their placement can be dire. In our research, we found that 99% of pet pigs that lose their placement will die. Only 1% end up finding a new suitable home. Miniature pigs can be wonderful pets. They are highly intelligent, very clean, and born housebroken. They grow to mature size around the age of four and can reach several hundred pounds. They have a lifespan average between 15 and 18 years. They are social animals that need access to their own species in order to exhibit natural behaviors. The number one reason pet pigs have, are abandoned is because they get bigger than people thought they would. The second most common reason is because of a single pig aggression. Pigs need the companionship of another pig. If they don't have that, they can develop behavioral issues, which happens around the age of two to three years old. We are in strong support of Amendment Number Two, which allows up to two miniature pigs per property. Neutering a pig is very important. It helps to keep the pig from trying to escape its enclosure. Unalterable pigs can also have an offensive smell, and neutering takes care of that. We understand that there are plans to neuter Alfred when the weather is more suitable, so he can thermo-regulate properly. We support Amendment Number Four. Initially, Alfred's size was of some concern, but we found that it's easier to corral a larger pig than a smaller one. Larger pigs are slower and more docile. We ask that Animal Care and Control be able to purchase needed equipment to handle a pig humanely and safely, such as squeeze boards. And we also hope the requirements in Bill 625 allow for neighborhood residents to feel comfortable as well.
Thank you. Mr. Gross.
Evening. Max Gross from Annapolis. I am speaking today on behalf of the Realtors of Anaronda County to strongly oppose this bill. While we do applaud the efforts to care for constituents' needs, we believe that the broad unintended consequences of this bill will far outweigh the potential benefits. Such consequences, though they have been addressed in other testimony, do include that reclassification of certain pigs as pets will cause countless lease agreements and HOA agreements with clauses about pet care to have to be rewritten in, in order to account for this change, which is an expensive and time-consuming process. Reclassification of certain pigs as pets could also impact the way that farmers who raise pigs as livestock are regulated and treated. The reclassification of animals based on the individual circumstances or requests of one constituent are likely to lead to other types of requests, including goats or miniature horses, which have very similar positive cases. There is also legal ambiguity. We've consulted a lawyer on when and under what circumstances such an ordinance would supersede HOA bylaws, and this could lead to confusion and escalate to litigation. In conclusion, the Anaronda County Realtors firmly believes that such decisions should be made on a case-by-case basis by homeowners and the neighborhoods affected, rather than have the county government try to weigh in with a broad case. I would also add that I hate to be the one throwing cold water on a very heartwarming story. I wish no ill will to Alfred or his family, but we just think that the broad consequences, including some of the things mentioned by the animal welfare testimony, in which many pigs are abandoned because they get bigger than they are expected to. Many pigs have behavioral issues if they don't have a second pig. While we do have a constituent who has done the research and has done the care, this regulation does not insist that the constituents in question do that research and behave that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on Bill Number 625? The public hearing on Bill Number 625 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 625.
Bill Number 625, Inordinance Concerning Public Safety, Animal Care and Control, Zoning, Miniature Pigs, and Residential Districts.
All right, there are four amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment requires shelter for miniature pigs to be at least 50 feet from the lot line of a residentially zoned property and at least 100 feet from any occupied dwelling.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a result of hearing feedback from residents in the community and wanting to really centralize any enclosure, really in a way from adjacent properties. So I hope I will have the support of my colleagues this evening, and I move the amendment forward.
Second. Second.
Is there any discussion? All right. Administration?
We support this amendment.
Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer. Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted. Amendment Number Two, this amendment limits the number of miniature pigs to no more than two and increases the minimum lot size.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this amendment is a result of feedback. I know we've talked in previous animal-related legislation about 6,000 square feet, understanding that miniature pigs can get up to 300 pounds. 6,000 square feet is not really appropriate. It might be the reason why some of those larger pigs no longer fit in their, on their property. So I really increased it significantly to 47,500 square feet. Originally had the intent of restricting to one pet pig, but after hearing humane concerns, increased that to two for partnership and socialization. Moved the amendment forward.
Administration? Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment...
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three, this amendment removes a licensing requirement for miniature pigs.
There we go. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request from Animal Care and Control, and I thought it was reasonable, so motion to adopt.
Rodbien, second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Mr. Volkey?
Yeah, can you explain why the administration, I don't want to pick a department, I'll just say the administration, would, would want to get rid of the licensing requirement?
I'll speak to that. There isn't, the main reason to license an animal is usually, well, for dogs and cats, it's rabies control. It is, it isn't really identification that helps somebody get their animals back quicker. In this case, it seems like an extra layer of oversight that just isn't needed. And I think it's a level of oversight that could then grow and set, set a precedent that other unusual animals must be licensed in the county, so.
Mr. Volkey?
I'm looking forward to hearing more ways that we can reduce regulation. I like this.
All right. Bless you. Madam Secretary, please, oh, wait, no, where, where are we? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer. Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Three has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four, this amendment requires miniature pigs to be spayed or neutered to reside in a residential zoning district.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This actually came out of requests from Animal Care and Control, but I was reading the article related to the Delaware situation, and a lot of the invasiveness, if you think of invasiveness growing and overpopulating, came from unspayed or neutered pigs. So knowing that Alfred is already on the schedule for this procedure, I felt it appropriate, and I moved the amendment forward.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Administration?
We support this amendment. It has the council to adopt it.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Four.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
I feel like this could be the Bob Barker amendment.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
That's right. Spay and neuter your pets. Aye. All right.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Four has been adopted.
Okay. Bill Number 625, as amended, will be heard on February 18th, 2025. Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? For the public's knowledge, I want you to let you know that the applications and information for Regions One and Three are now live on the county website. So if you want to go start checking those out. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, no, February, oh, that's right, for our session, at 9:00 AM for our council work session in our chambers. It's like, that's not...